It is my pleasure to call to order this May 25th, 2023 regular public board meeting in the school district of Haverford Township. I'm happy to welcome those of you who have joined us here in the Oakmont Administration Building and who are watching live on our YouTube stream. The meeting is being recorded for later viewing. Let's begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our board members will read the district's mission and goals.
The mission of the school district of Haverford Township is to educate and to inspire a community of lifelong learners who become well-rounded global citizens. The pillars of our educational system are: Our school environment is safe and nurturing; Excellence in education is a shared responsibility in partnership with all district and community members; Whole child development is vital to our educational system; Supports and conditions exist whereby all students have opportunities to grow and excel in the areas of academic, technical, and career and social emotional learning; and our decision-making process is student-centered and student voice is valued.
The 2020-2025 district goals are as follows. Social-emotional wellness: Produce a community of empathetic and resilient learners with skills to socially and emotionally flourish. Prepare contemporary citizens. Modernize and expand learning experiences to prepare students as critical thinkers, problem solvers, innovators, and designers within a complex global society. Diversity and inclusion: Establish a culturally diverse and inclusive educational experience that develops social-cultural proficiency.
Thank you. And now we have a procedural matter to take care of. We would like to appoint Ms. Jen Saxa, our Assistant Superintendent, to be tonight's acting board secretary.
Congratulations.
And now, Madam Secretary, you please call the role.
My pleasure, thank you. Dr. Crispin?
Here.
Mr. Feinberg?
Here.
Dr. Larson?
Here.
Dr. McKay?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Here.
Ms. Vitale?
Here.
Ms. Snodgrass?
Ms. Wedeman?
Here.
We have three board members out tonight on personal matters. The next item of the agenda is the official minutes. I will welcome a motion to approve the official minutes from the May 11th, 2023 regular public board meeting.
Crispin, move.
King, second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Minutes are approved, and now we can go to one of our favorite parts of every agenda is our report from our students. Tonight, we have Mia Dewald from the high school.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mia Dewald, and I thank you for allowing me time to update you on the recent happenings at Haverford High School. May is flying by, and it's hard to believe that today, in two weeks, we will be walking the stage at graduation. You may remember when my countdown was in the three-digit numbers, so I'm happy to say that it is down to fourteen. This past Tuesday was the annual senior breakfast, where students could come together during first block to celebrate their future plans. Senior prom is next Friday, and we are all excited to see the parents' hard work on the after-prom blast pay off. For those who are unaware, senior prom will be held at the Please Touch Museum, but the party will continue afterwards at the high school to ensure that our students have a safe and exciting prom night. Last week was keystones for underclassmen, and now students will just have to make it to finals, happening June 5th and 6th for seniors, and June 14th and 15th for all the other students. The high school and the middle school orchestras came together for our last concert of the year last Monday, and it was very nostalgic to be partnered up with a middle schooler for the last song. The annual art show was also held last week, giving our talented art students an opportunity to showcase the pieces they've been working on. With club elections preparing seniors to pass the baton to their junior peers, and the orchestra classes beginning to rehearse graduation music, there are many little reminders that summer vacation is only a few short weeks away. Our Haverford athletes are continuing to give their all, starting with the track and field teams attending District 1 playoffs last week, where they placed second in the entire District 1 competition, and the PIAA state championships today at Shippensburg University. The boys volleyball team began their playoffs last week and played their District 1 semifinal against Upper Dublin. Our softball team is also in the playoffs this week and has beaten both Coatesville and Downingtown West, and will move on to their next game tomorrow afternoon. Additionally, the student athletes had their spring signing day, and we saw twelve more students off to collegiate-level teams. The Haverford Ultimate Frisbee team celebrated their senior night and held their fundraising car wash this past Sunday at the Oakmont Building. As some I know, this is my last school board meeting as the student representative. I'd like to thank you all for making this such a wonderful experience for me. It's been an honor to inform you of all the things my peers and I are doing at school, and I can't thank you enough for all of the dedication and energy that you all commit to ensuring that we have a good school experience. I will certainly miss my Thursday night school board meetings, but rest assured that you will see my face again in the audience. Dr. Roushi, it feels like forever ago when I first met you in fourth grade, and it's been an honor to grow up and see you in the hallways. So, thank you again, everyone, and go forwards.
With that, Dr. Roushi, it's time for your superintendent's report, and I think we're going to be recognizing some of our fabulous student representatives.
Yes, we are. It's a great, another great evening for us here, representing, recognizing some of our students and staff, if you wanted to join me. Our student board reps join us every Thursday night when we have an action meeting and update us as to the happenings that are taking place in the high school and the middle school, and many happenings there are, all throughout the year. It's wonderful to listen to the enthusiasm and excitement with which you report all of those happenings to us, and we wish each one of our student board reps luck as they bring the school year to a close and move into summer mode. Mia Dewald. Mia is a senior, is going to be attending George Washington University in the fall to study international affairs. She's a student senate officer and participates in several other clubs: World Affairs, Science Academy, Haverford Tech Crew, National Honor Society, just to mention a few. Mia is also a manager and event coordinator. I had lots of information on you. And, and I hear you're going to be heading out of the country for senior week.
Yes, I am. I'm going to Iceland, so that's exciting.
Times have changed. That's not where I went for senior week. And I do fondly remember meeting you, and also the presentation that you provided at the outdoor classroom, which is now in existence at Chatham Park, Chatham Park Elementary.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Certainly. Just to stay up there? Okay. And I want you to, and I want you to stay up there. Erin Coyle. Erin is finishing her junior year at Haverford, and we sincerely hope, Erin, that you're going to join us at the meetings when you are a senior. Like Mia, Erin is part of the student senate and an officer in the Science Academy, as well as club co-founder of Teens for Future Medicine. Some of the extracurricular activities that Erin participates in, both varsity and club field hockey, Haverford Against Hunger, National Honor Society, she's a Gaelic football player, a camogie player, and I'm not quite sure how any of these students, you'll hear a theme as I introduce all of our students. I'm not quite sure how they find time to do all that they do and attend our meetings. You have work, you've got a job, so you have a job outside of school as well, and then volunteer at Lankinall Hospital. She's an Irish stepdancer who's going to be participating in a national championship in Nashville this summer. So, congratulations to you, and we hope to see you again next year.
Thank you. Just a little bit. And now, moving on to our middle school student representatives.
Bianca Solerno. Bianca is a rising eighth grader who's looking forward to running for student government. She loves to dance and play both the piano and the guitar. She's a member of Seventh Heaven, and we can all be on lookout this summer for her acting talents. As I understand, you're going to be in the premiere of a WHYY children's program?
Yes, the Infinite Art Hub.
The Infinite Art Hub, so we will all look for that on WHYY, and particularly, we'll be looking for you. Liam Pinder. Liam is a rising ninth grader and has participated in student government, chess club, and is a member of both soccer and the track teams, and he's also a member of the gold team. Is the trick good? Yeah. Sutton Gold. Sutton is a rising ninth grader. She's been part of Seventh Heaven and participates in dance, both jazz and classic jazz, and has been nominated for the Rita Emerson Fellowship. Sarah Brown. Sarah's a rising eighth grader who really enjoys school and helping all of her teachers. She participates in the Best Buddies Program. She has helped out with our back-to-school night programs at the middle school, and plays community soccer. So, again, that theme, they're involved in so many things, both in-school and outside of school. Tegan Day. Tegan is a rising seventh grader who, along with being a school board rep, is also a morning news sports reporter. Tegan attended the Delaware Valley Consortium for Excellence and Equity Leadership Institute and is really looking forward to playing basketball for HMS. Zora Alvarado. Zora is a seventh grader and a rising seventh grader, participates in Seventh Heaven, chamber choir, and dance, and just like Tegan, is looking forward to playing basketball for Haverford Middle School. Colton Crowder. Colton is a rising seventh grader. He's a huge Philadelphia sports fan who's looking forward to playing in the Unified Basketball Team next year. They'll look forward to having you as a team member there, Colton. Please join me in a round of applause for our middle school board representatives. Maeve Gilroy was among five students who were selected from hundreds of applicants to receive the John D. Unigus Memorial Scholarship from the Franklin Mint Credit Union Foundation. The scholarship was established in honor of the credit union's first and longtime president, who was passionate about education. During her freshman year at Haverford High School, Maeve became a member of Best Buddies. She had a neighbor who had some experience with bullying as someone with autism. Maeve's desire to promote inclusion drove her to join the club, and for all four years, she has served as a leader and a peer buddy in Best Buddies. And she currently holds the position of chapter president. Maeve's involvement in the life skills class as an aide and her role as a peer buddy have motivated her to pursue a degree in special education at Westchester. In the upcoming fall semester, she's inspired to continue learning from individuals who are different from her, and she's committed to making a positive impact in the world. We were just meeting with people last night who are interested in working in our district, so in a few years, I think you will be in that, in that room. Congratulations. Okay. That's the plug to you. Thank you. We have a staff member, a number of staff members who were recognized for a Making a Difference Award through the Delaware County Intermediate Unit, and one of the recipients from our district is a teacher from Linwood Elementary, Julie Parkinson. And I'd like to read to you a little bit about what has been written about Julie. Julie is an exceptional teacher leader at Linwood Elementary. Her positive can-do attitude influences our staff and inspires others to ensure that students succeed. Julie worked with all brand-new special education teachers and, under her wing, provided daily guidance on lesson planning, progress monitoring, scheduling, IEP meeting preparation, and parent communications. Her leadership in this capacity strengthened the special education department at our school, and her influence extends all across the district. Thank you so much for your dedication to the children and to the staff at Linwood Elementary, and thank you, Mrs. McGilvery, for recommending Julie for this award and preparing the nomination for her. Congratulations. Sure. Okay. Well, this is a whole group, so it's hard to say how the names are going to be there. All right, we have a large, a large group. Our Haverford Middle School Life Skills and Autistic Support Program team members were nominated for a Making a Difference Award, again, through the Delaware County Intermediate Unit, and they were nominated by a staff member from the Delaware County Intermediate Unit, and I'll read to you a portion of that nomination. This group of professionals is the living example of what it takes when all professionals commit themselves to full inclusion. The communication, collaboration, and commitment needed to ensure that students with complex instructional and communication needs are successful participants in and out of the classroom is extensive and it's ongoing. It starts with administrative support for implementing systems and prioritizing training. General education teachers adapt material in collaboration with the special education teachers. Special education teachers actively participate in general education classrooms to ensure students are actively engaged and learning content material. Related service providers help to co-teach lessons and facilitate students' communication skills in the general education setting. Para educators gain additional skills and knowledge through additional training to facilitate the students' independence in the general education environment. Their commitment to inclusion and the success of their students has provided the foundation for the entire Haverford Middle School community to embrace inclusion for all students, regardless of their abilities. The adults who are affiliated with both of these programs were invited to be here tonight. Hopefully, they were able to join us. Megan Nishudo. Melissa Bachansky. Alicia Courtney. Carolyn Curran. Dan Haran. Tim Finnegan. Christina Frick. Derek Gower. Grace Grassi. Kristen Kearns. Janine Kowzak. Beth McCormick. Shakura Monroe. Becca O'Donnell. Laura Pointkowski. Emily Ralph. Abby Romano. Tara Sable. Tina Sterns. And Tia Williams. I will make just a few comments, end-of-the-year reminders. I mentioned before our residency verification process, well underway for parents and guardians of current fifth and eighth grade students. We continue to send out reminder notices to those families about that process of residency verification. I want to thank our PTOs for the outpouring of appreciation throughout the week, last week, for the various teacher appreciation and different groups that were recognized. The PTOs certainly do a tremendous job of saying thank you to all staff members in the buildings. This is a time of the year where there are many different celebrations going on. We encourage you to enjoy each one of those, even the small moments, whether it be finishing the year of kindergarten, finishing a year as a fifth grader, finishing as an eighth grader, finishing as a senior in high school. Many small and significant moments for families to celebrate, and so we encourage you to slow down and celebrate everything associated with that, this time of the year. And we look forward to graduation in two weeks. Thank you, Ms. Wedeman.
The next section of our agenda is for public comment pertaining to items on tonight's agenda. No one has signed up. The best way to ensure that you have an opportunity to speak to the board is to sign up in advance by emailing Haverford, or emailing publiccomment@haverfordsd.net. There is a later portion of the agenda allowing public comment for items that were not on tonight's agenda, and we have been experimenting with allowing members of the community who are so inspired by tonight's presentation to say that they would like to speak, even if they hadn't signed up. That is a discretionary matter that we will take into consideration based on the time of the night and how many people express an interest later. Again, if you'd like to ensure that you are on the agenda for making public comment, it's best to sign up in advance. The next section of our agenda is for board reports. We had the Curriculum and Pupils Services Committee report, and Dr. Laura Christian will come on.
Great, thank you, Ms. Wedeman. So, the Curriculum and Pupils Services meeting was held last Thursday. I do want to note that it was a relatively long meeting compared to our usual pupil services meetings, because there was not an April meeting, so this was sort of two agendas rolled into one. So, it was longer than normal, but a very robust and interesting meeting. So, number one, we had a goal update from learning and assessment and technology. The first item for that was discussing the diversity inclusion goal, number three update. Four key priorities were Four key priorities were identified: addressing disproportionality and gifted in higher-level courses, recruiting and retaining diverse staff, culturally responsive teaching and practices, and student voice and family engagement. Next steps include executing implementation steps, sharing out action plans with relevant leaders and staff. There was a discussion of the technology alignment review. The CCIU has been contracted out to provide this alignment review report. Completed recommendations included filling senior administrator positions, creating a technology infrastructure plan, and reorganizing department roles and responsibilities. Partially completed recommendations include ensuring that all students have access to technology and Internet, and restructuring the technology budget to align with educational priorities. And some new goals include creating a strategic technology vision, developing a technology plan, and creating opportunities for training. The school calendar was the next item on the agenda, so this is the calendar for 24-25, not the upcoming year, but the year after. A draft of the calendar was presented and discussed. It's in the process of being finalized, and it will be brought before the Board at a later date. There was a discussion about the curriculum review cycle, preparing contemporary citizens, focused on modernizing assessments. And the goal is to identify how the district will expand and modernize assessment opportunities to prepare contemporary citizens. The internal and external audits are complete, teacher surveys are complete, and followed up using focus groups to further understand the survey results. And then some discussion about characteristics of modern assessments include student voice and choice, producing real-world products and processes, modern skills of collaboration, communication, critical thinking and creativity, and promoting global mindset. And then our last point was discussing mental health and wellness updates. Our wellness policy is required by PDE and the USDA. There have been a wide range of wellness activities and supports across the district, and the plan will need to be updated in the fall. And then there were two informational items presented, a homework policy update, more is going to be discussed at the June meeting, particularly for the elementary grades, and some discussion about books. The ELA audit will be starting in the upcoming school year, particularly discussion of To Kill a Mockingbird. So it was maybe more than two hours? I think the meeting was about two and a half hours long, so I wrapped it all up in like... Yeah, I wrapped it all up in about three minutes, but there was a lot of information presented and discussed, and a lot of opportunity for Q and I. So if you have more questions or curiosity, or you want to know more about any of that, it's all recorded, and it's all on our YouTube page. So, thank you.
Thank you. And that future date for the Board's consideration of the 24-25 school year calendar is tonight?
Oh, yes, of course. Sorry. Yep, that's tonight.
It's here.
Yep.
The next section of our agenda is for finance and facilities, and we have the bill list. I'll accept a motion to approve dispersments for payment totaling $1,648.39.
That's what's moved?
Okay, second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? This includes dispersments for the general fund, capital projects.
Climate control.
Mm-hmm. Any other comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Section seven of our agenda is for human resources. Item A is resignation. I will welcome a motion to accept the following resignations as listed.
Crispin moved.
Vitale second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Seven B is non-acceptance of appointment. I'll accept a motion to approve the following non-acceptance of appointment.
King moved.
Short second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Section C is for appointments. I will welcome a motion to approve the following appointments as listed below, contingent upon receipt of all necessary clearances, including Act 168 of 2014.
Crispin moved.
Vitale second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and we have a new principal to welcome.
Yes, we do, Ms. Weedman. It's with great pleasure that I introduce to the Board and community this evening Ms. Ashley Leach, who will be coming to us from the Garnet Valley School District, where she has been serving as an Assistant Principal. Throughout the interview process, Ashley's knowledge of teaching and learning at the elementary level in both the general ed classrooms and special education classrooms came through loud and clear. In conducting the reference check, among many other complimentary comments her present superintendent made, he just closed it off with, "She's the real thing. She's genuine, she's sincere, she's dedicated, has a highly collaborative work nature in working with others." And he said, "If we can't have her permanently, we're glad to see her go to Haverford." So we took that as a compliment as well. So thank you for being here this evening, Ashley. We really look forward to what you can contribute to our team, and I am sure the Chestnut Wald community will be very excited to meet you really soon. There's a little bit of Haverford swag there. You can wear it at Garnet tomorrow.
And there's a book or two in there.
Oh, yes, always.
Three.
Jen's contributions.
Section eight of our agenda is for Pupils Services, and item A is Educational Services Agreement. I will accept a motion to approve the following educational service agreement for a district student. The agreement covers reimbursement for privately obtained legitimate educational services as incurred by the family for the benefit of the student through August 31, 2024.
Crispin moved.
Vitale second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item B is for 2023 to 2024 contract approvals. I will accept a motion to approve the following educational contracts for students attending out-of-district placements for 2023 ESY extended school year and 2023 to 2024 school year.
King moved.
Short second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Section 10 of our agenda is for Policy Matters, and I'm sad that Miss Cygrass is not here to help others through that. We have three policies on the agenda for a final read and two for a second read. Our practice is to bring a first and second reading, and then, as I said, there are these three for a final reading to be approved. Item A is Policy 203. I will accept a motion to adopt Policy 203, Communicable Diseases and Immunization.
Crispin moved.
Vitale second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Dr. Rishi, for the benefit of the Board and the public, when we look at these policies in a first read, a second read, and in our committee work, there is a policy and often the attached administrative regulation here for the policy approval. We are just being asked to approve the policy itself, absent the AR at this point. Could you describe the rationale behind that?
Certainly. The policy documents are in two forms, the policy itself, and that's what you see on our agenda tonight for items 10A, 10B, and N10C. Not always, but quite often, a policy will have what is called administrative regulations, or we refer to them as the ARs. And the administrative regulations represent how the administrative team within the district enacts the policy. What are the different procedures, processes, protocols when we're following that policy? The administrative regulations themselves are not formally Board-approved. They're always reviewed with the policy, and as you know, as you mentioned, in committee, the Board has been providing input into them. But what is approved for the policy process is the actual policy document itself. And then, once approved, that administrative regulation is also attached to it and then posted on Board docs.
Okay, thank you. And we've had the first and second readings of these policies, 203, Communicable Diseases and Immunization. Is it correct that there has been no changes since the second read to the policy?
That is correct.
And this is a policy understandably that deals with health matters, and there is much, if not all of this, is prescribed by the state of Pennsylvania codes and requirements for public schools?
Correct.
Any other comments or discussion on 203? All in favor of adopting 203?
Aye.
Any opposed? Policy is approved. Item 2B is Policy 210. I will accept a motion to adopt Policy 210, Medications.
Crispin moved.
Vitale second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Is it correct that this one had no changes from the second read?
That's correct.
Any other comments or discussion? All in favor of approving Policy 210, Medications?
Aye.
Any opposed? Policy is approved. Item C is Policy 212. I will accept a motion to adopt Policy 212, Reporting and Grading of Student Progress.
Short's moved.
Vitale second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? I think there was just a modest change in this one. There was some Board recommendations to change some of the language that was framed in a negative to a more affirming perspective. So there was a change to identify students' strengths and areas for growth, and then to identify, number three, where interventions or supports may be required rather than pointing to remedial work or supports.
Yep.
Any other comments or discussion on 212? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 212 is approved. Now, the next three are ones that are here for the second reading, Policy 206. I will accept a motion to accept the second reading of Policy 206, Assignment Within District, along with the corresponding AR or the administrative regulations.
Crispin moved.
King second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? This one had some minor changes as well, based on the Board's comments. In the first reading, there was a reference to a Policy 251 that was removed.
Correct.
As an errant reference. And then there was a provision for an additional rationale for guidance for establishing boundaries that was removed.
And now the boundary wording changed.
And the bound, okay, so, yeah, there had been placement outside attendance area, and now it reads placement outside of...
School attendance boundaries.
School attendance. Okay. Any other comments or discussion?
Couple places it looks like boundaries is spelled differently. I'm not sure why, but just a minor, minor comment. Just consistent spelling throughout, that's all.
Okay. Oh, bound, areas or...
Bound, areas. Minor comment, but probably want to change it.
And then I noticed under the general guidelines, I think the request was to change the phrase attendance area. Under general guidelines, it uses attendance area, and that's another place where we could have the consistency with the boundaries. Just a minor suggestion for the next time we see it. Any other comments or discussion on 206? So this is a motion to approve the second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Policy E, or the agenda item E is for Policy 209. I will welcome a motion to approve, or to accept, the second reading of Policy 209, Student Health Services, along with the corresponding AR.
Vitale moved.
Crispin second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
I have just a few things. So I know that in the AR, it has information around the BMI, and I know I've asked about it, and I know that it is required by the state as well as federally for recording it and the state for recording it as well. But there is a lot of research that the BMI should never be used to predict individual health. And so I just am concerned about our students who are constantly swimming in a culture of anti-fatness to begin with, but we're required by law. So I just, couple of things that I would like us to maybe just be a little bit more explicit, so that it's known that this is required by law. One is just for the district to know that the link that we have on our website that's under PA mandated screenings, that was supposed to link to the state.paa.us is a stale link now. It doesn't work, so that just needs to be updated on the website. And then I was wondering, currently on the website, the BMI parent information letter that is given, I'm wondering if we could, it's linked through the PA state mandated area, but you can Google it and just go to that webpage directly and not through that space. So I just wonder if we could maybe make a subtitle or something that just says, "This is PA mandated," so that people know that that is where it's coming from. And then I'm wondering that if in the AR, under Health Services, I know our practice right now is that measuring kids' BMI, the students' BMI, happens individually or privately, but that's not explicitly stated. And so I'm just wondering if in the AR, under Health Services on page three, under number three, we can just explicitly say either individually with the nurse, privately with the nurse, whatever language, just so that we always make sure that practice continues of it being a private thing, so that kids aren't being weighed in front of other students.
Any other comments or discussion? Do those corrected links, adding language about where there's a specific mandate and the privacy of...
Explicitly stating that.
Stating that, are those changes that can be accommodated between the second and the final read?
Sure. Yeah.
They're in the ARs, okay, yep.
The actual policy is quite short.
Again, this is an area in which the district has a lot of prescription from the state on requirements for the health services. With those comments noted for the AR, the motion is to accept the second reading of 209. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And the sixth and final policy on tonight's agenda is Item F, 210.1. I will accept a motion to accept the second reading of Policy 210.1, Possession, Use of Asthma Inhalers or EpiPens.
Short's moved.
Crispin second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
I have a few questions that I'm not sure if this is something that needs to just be addressed. I know the AR is going back to the policy committee, but on page two of the policy, in the middle of the page, it states, "The student shall notify the school nurse immediately following each use of an asthma inhaler," that is, if they're self-caring. I don't know what that means. Does that mean if the student needs to utilize their inhaler in the middle of a test? Are they needing to go to the nurse immediately? Do they need to do it at some point that day? Maybe having just a little bit more guidance so that students know. And I don't really see that's a significant change, but just like maybe some kind of a timeframe of expectation would be good. And then I don't know if there is, towards the end of the page, it talks about a parent or guardian needs to complete a written requirement in order to request that a student carries their inhaler. And I'm just thinking about, we're K through 12. An inhaler is something that is a tool that a child and a student needs to learn to use on their own. So maybe there is a place for us to develop mentally, have some level of expectation, knowing some students can, some students not, but maybe towards the elementary to middle school transition time, if there is an expectation that more students carry their inhaler, that we kind of expect... If there is an expectation that more students carry their inhaler, that we kind of explicitly talk about that. That might be something that might be happening in practice or not, but like maybe just being, considering that, I don't know if we want to ask the nurses if that is a helpful thing for them or not. But I'm just thinking if a, if a parent has to require this and in writ, in writing, then that means actually probably the majority of the inhalers still then end up in the nurse's office for very large schools of middle school and high school. So it just, I, I'm just a little bit of clarification for me on a written request needing to happen from a parent in order for that self.
The two are, to include in here language that would indicate the circumstances around which they can consult.
Maybe, I don't know, and again, this might be something that we more want to have more clearly defined, like just laid out more clearly in the AR. Or not.
To date, this policy does not have an AR, right?
It doesn't tonight.
Everything's in, yeah.
There's also on, just again for some clarification, on page three at the top of the page, it says determination, determination of competency for the self-administration. It's not clear who determines that, is that the student's doctor, is that the student, is that the nurse? Who, and there it makes it really clear, like the determination's based on the student's age, their cognitive functioning, their maturity, their demonstration of responsible behavior. Those are all really important things, that's great, just who's making that determination? Is it our school nurse or is it the private doctor of the student? Again, just some minor clarifications.
And yeah, thank you for bringing those up if you have not tuned into all of our exciting policy committee meetings. That is one of the things that the, the board is trying to do, make sure that the policies are relevant to current practice, to best practice and are clearly laid out in a way that families, students and staff can implement them, so I think your comments are received in, in that light.
Ms. Weidman, if I could just add some additional comments, so on page two, I know that Dr. McKay mentioned this sentence already, the student shall notify the school nurse immediately following each use of inhaler or a Afrinaphrine auto-injector. While we're looking at the possibility of making some additional changes to that language, I think being clear that it has to happen immediately, particularly because if a student is continuing to experience an emergency, there may be the need for emergency services and sometimes you can use, I have an EpiPen and an inhaler, so sometimes you can use your EpiPen and your symptoms are not complete, a student may think that they're fine, you're supposed to contact emergency services. I would hate for a student to use these, either one of these, still be in class and think, oh, I can tell someone after my test or tell someone after lunch, whatever. And they're still in great harm and they're not getting the help that they need and that also places the district at a great liability, so if we could be very clear about that language as well as the current practices in our schools, what happens when someone is experiencing this type of emergency, I think that's also helpful.
Thank you for that and.
May I just a clarifying question to, to clarify the practices, what happens in an emergency? To bring that information back to the board, not to have that in policy language.
It could potentially lend itself to policy language because, so first off, there, there should be something in here about having to contact emergency services. And then I also want to make sure that if someone is specifically using their Afrinaphrine auto-injector, if they're experiencing anaphylaxis, what is the current practice that we are doing in our schools and is that consistent with our policy? So perhaps those, those things will, will lend itself hand in hand to help craft the language here.
Okay.
And it might be another policy that we just need to link to.
Standing orders. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I think some of these topics or questions are, are relevant to both the statutes and the rules for school districts and also individual students' health plans and, and all that, so maybe this policy isn't robustly contemplating a range of scenarios. We have the motion on the there was, well, there was a motion, that's how we opened discussion, right, so we were able to motion to adopt this second reading, accept the second reading. These sound like more involved kinds of comments than the ones board members had brought up for the previous policy, so what are our options at this point if to move forward with it with this level of further review and commentary or is there a path to us getting it back to committee to get additional information? Could, could you describe what the procedural?
Okay, so at this point, the motion has been made and it's been seconded, so the matter's before the board. To refer it back to committee would require a motion to refer to committee, a second on that motion, discussion on that motion limited to just return to committee and a vote on the sub-motion to return to committee. So otherwise, we proceed to voting on the original motion.
Which is to accept the draft that we have here.
It seems like substantive changes, so I would move to send it back to committee.
Okay, so.
Crispin move, to send it back to committee, is that, am I saying it right?
Okay.
Okay.
The motion is to return policy two ten point one to the policy committee for further consideration.
Crispin moved. King second.
Moved and seconded, so now I will open it to discussion just on this matter of returning two ten point one to committee.
Correct.
Any comments or?
It just seems like that's, that's a little more substantive changes, I think, based on what you had said and I think those are worth a deeper dive and a deeper consideration, especially because some of that is going to be impacted by school code and I would certainly like our attorneys to look that over and make sure that any policy that we would, that would come before us would have been thoroughly vetted based on the school code so that it's, you know, up to date and all of that, so.
Any other comments on or discussion about returning it to policy committee? Moved and seconded, discussed, all in favor of moving back to the policy committee for two ten point one?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That vote concludes our discussion on this matter.
Correct.
All right. Need my Robert's Rules of Order to get through this. Thank you, everybody. Item two, or item eleven on our agenda is for other items and in here we have two topics, one is A, the school board's schedule of meetings for twenty-three, twenty-four, I will accept a motion to approve the school board's schedule of meetings for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Vitale moved.
McKay second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? We're keeping the same two regular public board meetings a month. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item B is for the calendar for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, I will accept a motion to approve the calendar for the twenty-twenty-four to twenty-five school year.
Crispin move.
Vitale second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
And just for clarification, this is the calendar that we last saw at the curriculum meeting, right, last week? With all the changes that we talked about. And I believe there were some additional days maybe not labeled that are, that are now part of this calendar that we're looking at, right?
Yes, when you originally saw the calendar, we were looking just at days when students are in school or not, not in school for the purpose of holidays or, you know, things like our spring break, in-service days. What has now been placed onto that calendar are things such as what are the conference days, what are those days that are early dismissal for teacher, teacher in-service? That's some of what was not there before.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And for folks who aren't fully following along on our agenda, it is this colorful one pager, all color-coded for the different events. I'll say it does include the start after Labor Day, it does have a week plus a Monday as a spring break in April twenty-twenty-five and the way that the winter holidays fall, it is a nice long winter break.
And I was just going to remind everyone, this is the twenty-twenty-four to twenty-five calendar, so like.
Yes, the calendar for next year.
Yep.
The next year has already been approved and has, yes, is on our website.
Yep, so this will be very forward-looking into the future. That is a very long December break, I think I said that at the curriculum committee meeting, that is a very long December break.
Oh, yeah. Two weeks.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, and so first day of school, September third, twenty-twenty-four, and school year ends June twenty-twenty-five on the seventeenth.
Nope, the night, doesn't say that, oh, no, right.
All right, any other comments or discussion on the calendar? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Calendar is approved. The next section of our agenda is for public comment for items that were not on tonight's agenda. Public comments is a valuable contribution to the board's deliberation of the important and complex matters that come before it. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the community to address the board. As I mentioned, people were able to sign up to be on tonight's agenda by emailing publiccomment@haverfordsd.net in order to give everyone an equal opportunity to speak and per our board policy, you will have three minutes to address the board. At the three-minute point, a timer will sound and you will be asked to conclude your remarks. Please begin your comments by stating your name and confirming whether you are a resident of Haverford Township. If you have materials to distribute, please leave them at the end of the board table. Your name and the topic of your comments will be recorded in the meeting minutes and your presentation is being recorded as part of our meeting. If appropriate, an administrator or I will follow up with speakers to discuss or respond to issues raised. And Ms. Saxa, will you do the timer? We had two people sign up, the first was Beth Claus.
Thanks, good evening, my name is Beth Claus and I'm a resident of Haverford Township. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I wanted to express my gratitude to the school, school district's ongoing commitment to diversity, equity and inclusion. After watching the presentation at last week's curriculum and people services committee meeting, I was impressed with the varied goals and initiatives around continuing to work towards a more diverse, equitable, inclusive district and school community. The priority around engaging the school community, both families and students, to allow them to share their voices and experience seems like a very important next step in, in implementation. I was wondering how the district would proceed in creating safe spaces for students and families' voices to be heard and I look forward to hearing more about all the diversity and inclusion efforts in the future. I also wanted to thank the diversity and inclusion committee. I know that the committee chairs and the members, I know that everyone has much, many things that they do for our students and our schools, so taking on additional roles is very appreciated. It was great to hear more about the work being done and I look forward to hearing more at the regular committee meetings in the future. Thank you, I think that's it.
Thank you. The next speaker is Chris Shelton.
Hello, can you hear me? All right, I'm being real. I wrote this a while ago and then you guys apparently talked about it at the last committee meeting.
Okay, can I ask you again to state your name and confirm your residence?
Yeah, so my name is Chris Shelton, I'm a senior at Haverford High School and I do live in Haverford. So yeah, today I'm here to talk about the pressing concern that underlies the dire need for improvement in transparency in our school district. Transparency is not a mere aspiration, it is an urgent requirement if we are to uphold the principles of fairness and open dialogue in our education system. Example of this was The Kill a Mockingbird, which I think you guys addressed, but it's written a week ago, so I'm trying to, I, I didn't look at it, sorry. Didn't know that discussion happened, just found out like two hours ago, my bad. So The Kill a Mockingbird, it's a novel that captivates readers for decades, serving as a powerful tool for examining important themes such as racial injustice, empathy and the pursuit of truth, its removal, or I guess pause from the curriculum is what you guys had said, didn't seem super transparent and I was kind of concerned about it. The absence of transparency in decisions of this magnitude undermines the trust and leaves the educational community disheartened. It is crucial to recognize that parents who rightfully play a crucial role in their child's education should have been granted the opportunity to express their views and concerns, which I think they were, but likewise, teachers as experts in their fields should be, should have been actively involved in discussions about the curriculum, offering their valuable insights on how to best engage and educate students, such as, such decisions should not solely be determined by individuals in positions of authority. It's disheartening to learn that teachers that I actually spoke to, not just like for the past few weeks, but I had touched upon this with a teacher of mine earlier this year and when it first got removed back, what was that, or paused, what, twenty? Like, I would have been a ninth grade, I think, so, a while ago. Where was I? Speaking of, for their input, while I would elaborate further, these teachers have expressed their reluctance to be named fearing potential repercussions for voicing their opinions or concerns. This reality highlights unfortunately our educators are unable to openly express their thoughts without facing backlash. Such an environment contradicts the values and principles that Haverford stands for and is not the kind of educational setting I aspire to be a part of. With that being said, I want to emphasize that I hold a deep appreciation for the Haverford School District and the dedicated educators who consistently strive to bring out the best in our students, they deserve our utmost respect for their unwavering commitment to provide quality education and fostering a nurturing environment. However, I believe in order to further enhance our educational system, we need to work on, we need to work towards improving the transparency surrounding our curricular decisions by ensuring that parents, teachers and students have a voice in shaping the educational journey, we can create a more inclusive and accountable learning environment. That's all, thank you.
I wondered if this was a government class and maybe it's just the fan club that's out. Seeing the time is eight-thirty, we may have time for additional public comment, if anybody is interested, could you please raise your hand? Seeing none, we will move on, thank you. The next item of our agenda is for board reports and we'll start with Mr. Schwartz.
Thanks a lot. So on May nineteenth last week, a bunch of, myself and number, we were able to attend legislative breakfast at DCIU. That was a very, very good opportunity to, to, to meet some of our local and state representatives, including the new speaker of the state house, so I thought that was a very, very good event to attend on that front, actually, on the legislator front, I guess, since Larry's not here, I guess I'll just mention a couple things about that. There were a couple of bills that, that we discussed in previous meetings that went to the House floor related to, to gun safety. Two of them did pass the House, one was a red flag proposal and one of them was a backgrounds check proposal, a third one requiring reporting of lost or stolen handguns, what, did, did not pass the House, but those two bills I mentioned will be off to the Senate, so we didn't discuss that at the meeting on nineteenth, but that just happened yesterday, I believe, so. It, it was a good session, though. I also was able to attend for a Chatham Park update, the, the May fairs took place on Saturday, it's a great event, if you are a Chatham Park parent, hope that you have a chance to attend it, the kids absolutely loved it despite the rain. Still managed to go out and do a lot of fun games and get little trinkets at the end of the day, it was, it was a good event. Also, I just wanted to say, Dr. Crispin gave a good, a good synopsis of that two hour and thirty-four minutes curriculum meeting, I was unable to attend that in person, I was crushed by it, I had a last minute childcare issue, but I did watch the, watch the entire thing on YouTube, I didn't fast forward much. A little bit, but yeah, no, if you, you know, we've had a lot of questions and, you know, raised about what our D E I program actually is and, and I think that the first hour, hour and a half of that, I think is a very, very good version, kind of a Cliff Notes version, if you will, of all that goes on and all the effort that's put into it. And, you know, I loved a couple of things, one is that we, we saw some really concrete examples of what precisely is being done. And then, you know, as, as an engineer, I love seeing numbers and data-driven analysis and analytics and, and all that and there's a lot of that in there. But as a, but as a planner, I also have been taught that numbers aren't everything and there's a little bit of that in there as well, I mean, a lot of great examples, one of them just comes to mind, you know, there's often this kind of thought of, of kids who are acting up in, in class are bad students. And one of the issues that's been raised is, well, maybe they're not bad students, but they're bored students. And one of the issues that's been raised is, well, maybe they're not bad students, but they're bored students. And that may be indicative of somebody who actually needs to be moved up in certain areas. And I love how that is being looked at now at every level. We're not using quotas or percentages or anything like that. We actually are using very good, equitable, data-driven analysis to make good decisions. So if you want to get a great synopsis of what all of that means, I think watching, you know, we have a long weekend coming up. So an hour, I think, spent would be an hour well spent to watch that. And with that, I'll pass. Oh, happy birthday to Dr. King. I said before, I'll say it again, though, happy birthday yesterday.
Oh, thank you. I also attended the Legislative Breakfast with many of our board members. As Mr. Schwartz mentioned, a great opportunity just to, one, meet other school board members that are locally serving, as well as just meeting some of our local and state officials. It's always a great experience to see how school board and the policies that we are implementing and what's happening across our state. And to see how these things are happening live and in action. And so to hear that information from legislators, it was extremely informative. I also have to just give, and I gave my praise during the curriculum presentation, but the meeting was phenomenal. And not just that particular meeting, our committee meetings are when you get to see the nuts and bolts of what is happening before we come here to vote. And so I encourage community members to attend those meetings. If you cannot attend them in person, look at them on YouTube so that you understand how it is we come to this table and make these decisions. They're not just happening just by happenstance, it's because they're being provided with information and truly making informed decisions. Last but not least, I know we're at the final stretch, so to speak, of the school year. And so teachers, PTOs, administrators, they have some really great things planned for our students. Field trips are happening now, class parties are happening now. And so just a big thanks to everyone for getting us through another school year and looking forward to the next, last few weeks ahead.
I've had a busy week since I was last here. So in addition to the curriculum meeting that I was at last Thursday, last Friday, I was at two different events in the district. So first, I was at the middle school in the morning, I did Middle School Career Day. So while you were all at the Legislative Breakfast, I was hanging out with the eighth graders. It was really fun. I had three different groups of middle schoolers, so about 20 students in each group, so like maybe 60 students total. And gave them a brief presentation about, you know, what does it look like to be a college professor and to be an economist? I showed them zero graphs, you're welcome. As promised, I showed them zero graphs. They had some really good questions and, you know, it was, it was fun. It was a really nice day, so that was nice. And got to meet some of the other presenters as well, so that was, that was fun. And then in the afternoon, evening on Friday, I went to the May Day with my family at Linwood. That was really fun. Mrs. McGilvery was in the dunk tank. So that was great to see. Some of the other teachers got pie in the face and just, it was like, it was a lot of fun.
Our new principal is like, oh.
No, it was great, it was great fun. The kids had so much fun. It's a really big fundraiser for the PTO and for the, for the activities that the PTO does. So it was, the kids had a great time. And so I feel like last year, the weather was not great and it got moved indoors. So this year, it was a very nice day, outdoors. Just fun, it was really fun. So that was great. Monday, at the very last minute, I was able to be an escort for Young Writers' Day at Linwood. So I got to take a songwriter, a music therapist around to some of the first grade classrooms. So I got to go to my child's classroom, but then some of the other classrooms and help facilitate that. And that was really fun because I got to see how a song gets written. And he had a guitar and the kids were singing. And we made a little music video that the kids got to watch and see themselves. And I was talking with a couple of teachers after and they said, you know, all the kids were really excited and now they all want to go write their own songs. And, you know, I talked to a few neighbors about, you know, what their kids did. And they, you know, all the different kids at different age levels and different classrooms did different things. But they were all really excited about what had happened in their classroom. And so it was just, it was really terrific that we have that opportunity. And then I had lunch with some of the writers and then I got to give them like a little informal behind the scenes tour at Linwood. So they were all very impressed. They had not been, many of them had not been to the new Linwood building, but were familiar with the old Linwood building. So that was really fun. And then the Linwood Art Show was last night, so I've been at Linwood a lot lately. The Linwood Art Show was last night, so three floors of amazing artwork. And I'll just say that I was really impressed by the wide range of techniques, the wide range of, I guess, styles and artists that were represented. And then also just different, you know, like different locations, like art from Greece, art from Egypt, art from, it just lots of different places. So it was really, it was really neat, it was really great to see. So thanks, I've been busy. Long board report.
We'll go down to the other end of the table.
Yeah, so I also attended the Legislative Breakfast, which was a really great opportunity. Won't say more because everybody has already said it was a great opportunity. But I was able to spend a couple of different times at the high school with the orchestra band and the chamber music. I'm really impressed with the musical abilities of both. The high school was there, but in the orchestra and band performance, there was also the middle school students came up as well. Mia also mentioned that they joined together at the very end, which was really lovely. And I attended the Curriculum Committee meeting last week, which again, I will put in a plug for folks to be able to go back and watch, watch that and look at it. But one thing I failed to do, I thanked the staff and faculty who are very heavily involved in donating their time for diversity, equity, and inclusion. But I failed to thank Ms. Carter. And since you're here, just want to say your position is one that I'm so grateful we have and that you're here doing the work that you're doing.
I have a lot, but I hate that Laura went first.
Sorry.
I know, like you're, you're-
Oh, competing really?
Yeah, because we were both at Linwood, yeah. We had each other quite a lot.
Doing a lot of the same, a lot of the same thing, so. Yes, I was at the Linwood Spring Art and Music Concert last night. The art, like Laura said, was absolutely incredible. Mrs. Sherbinko is a phenomenal art teacher and I'm one of her art room helpers during the year. So I'm always amazed at the ambitious projects she comes up with. And I'm always thinking, oh, I don't know about that, but the kids rise to the challenge and they make, the work they make is unlike anything I've ever done in elementary school. It's truly amazing. So thank you to Mrs. Sherbinko. I also want to thank Mrs. Reyes. My son was in the third grade ukulele concert, which was adorable. But I want to thank her not just for the hours she spent teaching the third graders ukulele and teaching them the songs that they did, but just for what I would imagine was the hours spent on logistics to make this happen. Third grade, if you don't know, used to do recorders. My older boys did recorders and ukuleles are way cooler and much more pleasing to listen to. But, you know, before with recorders, everyone had their own recorder. So this required, I would imagine, a lot of time for Mrs. Reyes and from the other music teachers to get ukuleles from other schools, because not every child, it's not a one-to-one ratio. I'm assuming there was borrowing, the third grade had to be split in two. So the hours that Mrs. Reyes and the music teachers spent coordinating this is not lost on me. And I want to say thank you because I think this is such an important opportunity. For some children, this is their only chance to ever be in a concert. They might not continue with music. And so that we give them this opportunity, I think it means a lot. And these are the events that I always talk about that bind children and their schools and the community. So thank you very much to Mrs. Reyes and all the music teachers, because I believe they're doing it at all the elementary schools. I was at May Day and it was awesome just to, I volunteered at the food table to see all of the students, past and present. Erin, our student rep, was there, so I talked to her for a little bit at May Day. And just a fun event that the PTO put on. And these are the events that the children look forward to so much every year. And it was a beautiful night. And though I am not a part of Cooper Town, my son did volunteer for goal team at their equivalent to May Day, which I believe is called the Highland Fling or Highland Fair. And I dropped him off, they had a beautiful day on Sunday and it looked like they were having a blast. My son had fun volunteering there. So thank you to the PTOs. And I feel like Laura and I have been living the same life. I was volunteering at Young Writers' Day at Linwood Monday, on Monday. And so much fun. It was one of my older children's favorite events. And my youngest doesn't remember it, but I swear he did it in, I'm like, you had it in kindergarten, but he doesn't remember because it was right before the shutdowns with COVID. But his third grade class, they loved their, both their presenters, but it was really cool. The second presenter was a singer-songwriter, composer, and filmmaker. And he was showing them some jingles to commercials he did from the 80s when he first started out. And the kids loved it, like they were laughing, they got all into it. And I think it was interesting to them, like the first presenter they loved was an author and was doing some work with Disney, and so that was super cool. But, you know, they've heard of authors, I mean, they all read books and get them from the library. But I don't think, at least for my son, they ever thought about, oh, I could write music for a living. It just introduced them to a new avenue. And the PTO put this together in one week at Linwood. And my friend used to run it for Linwood and it would take like a month. And that they were able to whip this out, the luncheon, getting escorts, getting a breakfast set up. I just want to say thank you to our PTOs. And a shameless plug, all of the PTOs at all five elementary schools put in so much time. It's thankless work, they don't get paid for it, they don't get recognized for it. And they usually just ask like a nominal dues, like $20 a year. Please, if you can pay, it goes to so many wonderful activities. And volunteering, no matter how small, an hour at a food table, you know, or bringing in a dish for a luncheon for Young Writers' Day, just bringing in some brownies, every little bit helps. So please support your PTOs, my shameless plug. And just on a more serious note, I just wanted to say I consider it an honor and privilege to be on this board. And I believe one of the board's main responsibilities is to provide oversight on behalf of the community and taxpayers. So to that end, I am requesting that there be an explanation of the role of Sage Wellness and the removal of To Kill a Mockingbird from the eighth grade ELA curriculum at the June curriculum meeting. As I stated last week, this is first and foremost an issue of transparency. This isn't about To Kill a Mockingbird, this could be any piece of curriculum. It's only about To Kill a Mockingbird because, book I asked a question about and it all kind of led this way. Not only was a core curriculum book removed against teacher recommendation in a non-transparent fashion, but an outside organization had undisclosed meetings with our teachers that are not provided for in the Sage Wellness contract. And if I'm reading the contract right, it says the meeting should only be with school principals and a designated equity team representative. Never says anything about meeting with ELA teams or any other such teams, social studies teams. So this is a matter that I think should concern everyone, board members, stakeholders, and outside organization possibly influencing our curriculum is something that needs to be addressed. And I'm also going to go on record asking that at, that the supplemental curriculum review process that Ms. Saxa mentioned at last curriculum meeting be detailed and reviewed at the June curriculum meeting as well, especially how this process is initiated. The supplemental curriculum review was only acknowledged well after it occurred and even then, only because it was brought to light by other sources. I have grave, grave concerns when four to five students, no matter who these students are, can alter curriculum, curriculum that our teachers spent countless hours working on just by opening their mouths. I think it's a slap in the face to the teachers who, when we disregard their expertise and experience on educational matters. And yet we continue to note at our meetings that there's a PA, there's a teacher shortage in Pennsylvania and that the number of teachers who are leaving the profession is declining. And finally, I'd be remiss if I just didn't say, someone I respect very much said to me, Danielle, how can you say Haverford is banning books? How can you even compare the situation of what's going on in states like Florida and Texas? And I said, well, you know, saying a book isn't banned, but knowing full well it's never going to be taught again, is really the same thing, it's just semantics. And honestly, I believe what's going on here is actually worse. I'd much rather someone come at me, come at a school board meeting, say what they want to say and know what I'm up against, rather than someone being sneaky and going through backdoor channels to get things done. For the record, the second way I think is much smarter and more effective, but it needs to be called out and I really want to address these matters at the upcoming June curriculum meeting. Thank you.
My turn. I was also- I was also at the Delaware County Legislative Breakfast last Friday. And I will say a couple more things about it. One is that we are so fortunate here in Delaware County to have public education advocates representing us locally at the, our Delaware County Representatives and state senators were in attendance. Greg Vitale was not able to be at the breakfast because he was at our Career Day, I understand. So demonstrating his support for our schools. We also had U.S. Representative Mary Gay Scanlon. And across the board, we just have representatives who care about our schools, care about our communities, want to connect with school boards, school administrators, and get the input to make the decisions that will help fund and program public education. So it was great to see all of that support. It was also interesting to me to see that I think six of the representatives in the room got some of their earliest government experience by serving on school boards. So they bring that with them to their service. And Dr. Rucci was in attendance, so it was nice for us to have a strong showing from Haverford at the event. And we are also able to recognize Larry Feinberg, who is not here tonight, but the Delaware County Intermediate Unit and the Legislative Council appreciated him for his many years of leadership of that Legislative Council. He got a lovely statuette or, you know, something for a memento of his many years of service. And it was nice to be able to be with that large group and share our, share our Larry Feinberg with everybody and share our appreciation for all he has done in his service to Delaware County and public education. I, I, like, it's like all the feels going through the elementary schools and hearing all those. And I have a high school student now and high school is great, but it, you know, maybe isn't quite as cute as some of those. I have to say, like, I think the ukuleles is great, but one of my greatest joys was watching those recorder concerts and hearing all the errant honks and squeaks. I just delighted in that. So hopefully there is still some like missed notes and things like that to keep the ukuleles going. But there are, you know, lots of great events that we're able to go to and cheer for the Fords and see the many ways in which they demonstrate their talents and gifts. And one of the ones that I was able to go to this past, last week, was the secondary art show that took place in the middle school for three nights. And the gym was just transformed once again into an amazing museum, a display of creativity and skill. And you saw just such a wonderful range of talents. One of the ones that surprised me was typography. Kids with the script did clever kind of plays on words and used the words as the art. There were all these different textures and mediums and landscapes and portraits and large-scale projects and like wonderful ceramics, ones that I wished there had been a note, like, can I buy this piece when you're done displaying it? So lots of, lots of talent to celebrate and just a nice, the night that the gym was open, family members and people were posing, the artists were posing with the picture, getting pictures of the artwork. It was great to see all of that. And the year end is full of all of those kinds of events. I'm glad the board members are getting out to enjoy these special traditions and to cheer on the talents of our students and hope that the community also takes advantage of the opportunity to get to some of those events and be part of our traditions. The next regular public board meeting is scheduled to be held on June 15th. We're going to take a little bit of a longer break to fit graduation in next week. So June 15th, or not next week, on the- the 8th, yes. So there's next week, the last is not, we don't have one June 1st. June 8th is graduation. And then June 15th will be, 15th will be our next regular public board meeting here at 7:30 PM in the boardroom of the Oakmont Administration Building. And with that, we can adjourn. All in favor?
That's a move.
If there are students here who need to have any documentation signed that you are here, I mean, you can stay right in your seats. And Ms. Saxa?